Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, dear devotees, Dhanukranams. Today is the grand culmination, final session of our Krishna book. Krishna, the supreme personality of Godhead and tomorrow onwards, we are going to start Ramayan. So let's start with Mangalacharan prayers. Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Narayanam namaskrityam naruncheva narutam. Deviim sadasvatim vyasam tatojayam udhirayet. Nashtra prae shabhadreshu nityam bhagavatasevaya. Bhagavati uttama ashloke bhaktir bhavati nashtriki. Krishnaaya Vasudevaya devaki nandanayacha. Nanda Gopakumaraya Govindaya namo namaha. Namoh pankajana bhaya namoh pankajamaline. Namoh pankajanitraaya namaste pankajangre. Pahi pahi mahayogin devadeva jagatpate. Nanyam dvadabeyam pashe yatrarmritto parasparam. Krishna Krishna mahabaho bhaktanama vayankarathva mekodhayama naanam. Apavargose samshote. Om jnana timrindasya jnana anjanashalakhaya chakshunum militam yeena tasmai shri gurave namaha. Sri chaitanya manobishtram stapidam yeena bhootale svayam rupa kadhamayam dadatisva padantikam. Vandeham shri guru shri utupadakamalam shri guruun vishnamamsha. Sri rupam sagrajatam sahagana ragunathanvitam tam sajeevam. Saadvaidam savadutam parijana sahitam shri krishna chaitanya devam. Sri radaa krisnapadaan sahagana lalita shri vishakkanvitamsha. Namom vishnu padhaya krishna preesthayabootale. Shima de bhaktivedanta swami nikina minne. Namaste sadasvate devi gauravani prachari ne. Nirmisesh shunyavadi paschatyade shatari ne. Namoh mahavadanyaya krishna prema pradhayate. Krishnaaya krishna chaitanya namne gauradushina mah. Panjatatvadmakam krishnam bhaktarupa swarupakam. Bhaktaavataram bhaktaakyam namami bhakta shaktikam. He Krishna karuna sindho dina bandho jagatpate. Gopeesha gopika kanta radaa kanta namostute. Tapta kanchana gaurangi radhe vrinda vaneeswari. Vishamano sudedevi pranamami haripriye. Vanchakalpatarubyascha prapasin duvyevacha. Patita naampavnebyo vishnavebyo namo namaha. Jai shri krishna chaitanya prabhu nityanandam. Shri Advaita Radhar shri vasadi hor bhaktavrinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Mukam karoti vaachalam pangumlanga etegirim yatra pathamamandeh shri guruundhenataharinam. Paramanandamadhum shri krishna chaitanya mishwaram. Hariyom tatsa. Gurave gaurachandraaya radhikaaya taralayee. Krishnaaya krishna bhaktaya tad bhaktaya namo namaha. Adham bidhav jokana kavadaato sankirtanai kapitarao kamalayatakshao. Vishwambharao dujvarao yugadarma palao. Vandeh jagatpriyakarao karunavataaro. Ay dinnada yadranaath he maturanaath kadha abaloke. Hridayam twadaaloke kateram. Daltya brahmyati ekim karomyam. Vasudevasudam devam kamshichanu ramardhanam. Devaki paramanandam krishnam vandeh jagadguru. Hey Krishna, so we are on the last chapter of the Krishna book. And looks like we will complete the 90th chapter of the Krishna book today. So we are talking about the super excellent opulences of Lord Shri Krishna. Aishwariyesha sagrasya, veeriyesha yesha shrigha. Jnana vira agyes chayva sanambhagai tingana. Swi, we have been talking about the six opulences that Krishna alone possesses to the fullest. Right, even greater than the Vishnu. The Vishnu forms possess only sixty qualities. But Krishna in his form as Shamasundar Krishna, he possesses these four qualities which not even present in Lord Vishnu. So you are talking about Parivar Madhurya, Benu Madhurya, Rupa Madhurya and Prema Madhurya. The loving exchanges that he has with the devotees. So these four qualities are present only in Krishna. And that is why Krishna is said to be the source of all the incarnations. Krishna is not just an avatar. Krishna is the avatari. Krishna is the source from whom all the other incarnations, whether it is Purushavatar, Leela Avatar, Gunavatar, Manavantara Avatar, Shaktivesh Avatar or Yuga Avatar, all of them are emanating from this one person who is called Krishna. Ekala Ishvara Krishna, Ara Sababritya, all the other avatars are executing the mission of Lord Shri Krishna. And they possess as much opulences, as much qualities, as much power they reveal or they have, they seem to have, according to the time, place and circumstances, according to the mission for which they appear. But Krishna is possessor of all the opulences in all the times, right, at all times unless Yogamaya is hiding that of Krishna for the pleasure of Krishna himself. So that may be a case when Krishna is not displaying the opulence. That's for the pleasure of the Lord and that also to enhance the, to enhance the loving reciprocation between the Lord and his pure devotees. And we saw the example of Damodar Leela, we saw the example of, you know how Krishna forgetting himself, you know, the Leela where, what do you call, you know, where Krishna is, Krishna, you know, that's what the Acharya has explained. That is Krishna doing and acting and you know, when he is actually tears are flowing down, flowing down from his eyes and he is running away from Mother Yashoda, is he acting? Right, and then the Acharya has explained that Krishna is not acting. But Krishna is a supreme lord, then he, why is he afraid of his mother? You know, the entire, the fear personified is, is afraid of Krishna. They were all doing their proper duties because they are afraid of Krishna. And that Krishna is afraid of Mother Yashoda. How is that possible? How do you understand this? And then the Acharya has explained that when, when we were also discussing about that, that one devotee asking a question. Can Krishna make a stone which he himself cannot break or something like, which cannot lift? And then we said that Chaitanya Charanprabhu answered this question where he said, yes Krishna can make a stone which he cannot lift and if he wants he can lift it. So it is completely for the pleasure of the supreme lord and the lord can do anything which, you know, the Yogamaya can act like a shield for which the lord's pleasure is the, is the supermost or the prime most. Even when such situations where Krishna is being overpowered by his devotees. Right, we see that, you know Krishna is making a promise and then, you know, Krishna is breaking his promise. And then Krishna is saying, Konthia prithijani nami bhakti pranishita arjuna, you declare. Because there is no value for my word, I may go back on my word, but my devotee is what I will never, I will never dishonor. Does that mean the devotee is greater than Krishna? Yes, because Krishna's will that the devotee should be greater than Krishna. It is only Madhvendrapuri's pastime, we saw how Madhvendrapuri wanted to get away from Ramuna. He went to Jagannathpurie but his glory is reached. Jagannathpurie even, even before Madhvendrapuri reached, right? That means everything happens with the will of the lord. If the lord wills that the devotee gets more, more accolades than himself, then it happens like that. If the lord, if the lord's wills that, you know, I should get scared of my mother, I want to enjoy complete vatsaly rasa. I want to enjoy being a son to my mother without the power of, you know, the awe and reverence coming into the picture, then so be it. Right, because Maya Devi or Yogamaya, like the other day someone was asking, who is Yogamaya, who is Mahamaya? They are all energies of the lord and they all work for the pleasure of the lord. Well Yogamaya takes care of the spiritual potency or the spiritual pastimes of the lord. Where the lord himself has to be concealed by his powers, certain powers. So that the lord can have utmost pleasure, then Yogamaya takes care of it. And when the lord, for the lord's pleasure, if something has to be done in the material context, like, like, appearing in this world just to, you know, like the Lord, Mahamaya appeared as Durga Devi, right? Along with Krishna as a sister of Krishna. And in this way, Durga Devi or Mahamaya also works in the service of the supreme personality of Godhead. So the energetic is always the supreme and he allows energies to take over at times. And the energies are also working towards the satisfaction of Krishna only. So irrespective of whatever happens, it is for the pleasure of Krishna. Irrespective of who wins, Krishna may lose, but that is the desire of Krishna. Right, ultimately everything works around in this world and in all the worlds only for the pleasure of Krishna. Because he is Ekala Ishvara, he is only enjoyer, everybody else is, everybody else is a Prakriti. So on that note, let's continue reading the final conclusive glorification of the supreme personality of Godhead by Sukhadev Goswami as he explains it to Parikshit Maharaj. Let me share my screen and devotees would like to read can, can raise your hand and then we will continue, okay. Archana.
Hare Krishna, Mataji. Sukhadev Goswami then glorifies the lord as one who is honored by the Yedu Varaparishat. The assembly house of Edu dynasty and as the killer of different kinds of demons. Krishna, the supreme personality of Godhead could have killed all the demons by employing his different material energies. But he wanted to kill them personally to give them salvation. There was no need of Krishna's coming to this material world to kill the demons. Simply by his willing, many hundreds and thousands of demons could be, could have been killed without his personal endiva. But actually, he descended for his pure devotees to play as a child with Mother Yashoda and Nanda Maharaja and to give pleasure to the inhabitants of Dwaraka. By killing the demons and giving protection to the devotees, Lord Krishna established the real religious principle, which is simply love of God. By following the factual religious principle of love of God, even the living entities known as stirakchara were also delivered of all material contamination and transferred to the spiritual kingdom. Stira means trees and plants which cannot move and chara means moving animals, especially the cows. When Krishna was present, he delivered all the trees, monkeys and other plants and animals who happened to see him and serve him both in Vrindavan and Dwarka. Lord Krishna is especially glorified for giving pleasure to the Gopis and the queens of Dwarka. Sukhadev Goswami glorifies Lord Krishna for his enchanting smile by which he enchanted not only Gopis of Vrindavan but also queens of Dwarka. The exact words used in this connection are vardayan kamadevan, devam. In Vrindavana as boyfriends of many Gopis and in Dwarka as husbands of many queens Krishna increased their lusty desire to enjoy with him. For God realization or self-realization, one generally has to undergo severe hostilities and penances for many, many thousands of years and then it may be possible to realize God. But the Gopis and queens of Dwarka simply by enhancing their lusty desire to enjoy Krishna as their boyfriend or husband receive the highest type of salvation. This behavior of Lord Krishna with Gopis and queens is unique in the history of self-realization. Usually people understand that for self-realization, one has to go to the forest or mountains and undergo severe hostilities and penances. But the Gopis and the queens simply by being attached to Krishna and the conjugal love and enjoying his company is in a so-called sensuous life, full of luxury and opulence, achieve the highest salvation. Which is impossible to achieve even for great saints and sages, sages and saintly persons. Similarly demons such as Kamsa, Dandavakra and Shishupala who all treated Krishna as an enemy also got the highest benefit of being transferred to the spiritual world. May I continue Mataji? Thank you Mataji, Hare Krishna Mataji.
Thank you, Dhanukranam Hare. So this is very wonderful, right? We all know that the Gopis of Vritavan were actually sages in the Gandakaranaya forest. When Lord Ramachandra appeared, they all wanted, they all had this, this extreme love for Lord Ram and they all wanted to enjoy this Madhurya rasa with Lord Ram. We all know Lord Ram is Mariyada Purushotham, right? It's interesting that, that we are going to start Ramana next. And we just talking about, on the last day of Krishna book, we are talking about how the Gopis of the Vrindavan are actually the devotees of Lord Ram who worship Lord Ram who had this intense desire to serve Lord Ram in the Gandakaranaya forest. And Lord Ram said, I am an ekapatni prata, right? I have taken ekapatni prata, means I am already married to Sita Devi and I'm not, and I'm not going to accept any other wife, right? In this life, but later when I incarnate as Krishna, I will reciprocate with all of you. And that is how we are seeing here, that as many millions of Gopis that are there, Krishna is personally enjoying with them, dancing with them, performing rasarila with them. Right, now all these chapters were describing in detail, right? How Krishna is the supreme lord and Mariyada Purushotham Lord Ram, as we will see, as we study Ramayan from tomorrow, we are going to see how Lord Dharma, I mean Lord Ram has a personification of Dharma. Whatever is right Lord Ram will do, whether or not, whether or not it is going to give him pleasure or whether or not. Because he was very, very unhappy with the decision that he had to take, right? Because it is a very difficult decision because he is, he is a husband, he is also the king, right? And as Mariyada Purushotham, he had to take the decision of sending Mother Sita to Walniki Ashram, right? Although as a husband, he did not want to do it because he knew the purity of Sita Devi, right? Because he is Mariyada Purushotham, he had to act in certain circumstances, had to decide on certain madness, certain way because he is Mariyada Purushotham. Whereas Lord Krishna is the Purana Purushotham Bhagwan, right? He is like, you know, all the rules are meant to be broken, you know? Tarimukthu sakshat bhagavat pranitam, right? Some rules are there, I will adhere to the rules as much as I want to set an example. But I am not within the rules and regulations, that is the mood of Lord Shri Krishna. He is beyond the three modes of middle nature. Of course Lord Ram is also beyond the three modes of middle nature. But the point to understand here is, the purpose of Lord Ram was to establish Ramaraja, was to establish being a Mariyada Purushotham, being establishing the fact of how, you know, a ruler has to rule the citizens. A father has to rule or a father has to maintain his family. Any leader, you know, how that leader has to be empathetic towards his, his group members. You know, a king has to be empathetic towards his, towards his, you know, the people of his kingdom. And how a king has to be not only, you know, he had a relationship with Jattayu, he developed a relationship with Sugriwa. He had a, he had a relationship with Jam Bhavan, he had a relationship with Hanuman, right? You know, Vanaras also and Jattayu and Sampati and all of them, right? Whomever he interacted with, right? Lord Ram had a very beautiful relationship, right? And he was able to get the Dharma done, right? Through all of these people by his own personal example. So by the decisions that Lord Ram took, he was, he was actually guiding all of the people in this world to choose correctness over pleasure. What is right has to be done, whether or not it is pleasurable or not. Like Prabhupada gives an example, even in the month of May, you know, a mother has to go into the kitchen and cook. Right, whether she likes it or not, whether it is sultry, whether it is, whether it is extremely hot, whether it is sweaty, doesn't matter. Also and even in the winter season, one has to take bath earlier in the morning during the Brahmanmurti time. So it is not about, it is about following rules and regulations because that is for our ultimate good. Rather than go ahead with whatever little pleasures that life bring in, right? Even in the material parlance, they say, look at the bigger picture, look at what the long term gives you. Rather than going in for these short term wins like that, right? They all have their, have their base in Ramayan, where everybody we see, you know, whether it is Lord Ram, whether it is Lakshmana, whether it is Barata, whether it is Shattrugna, whether it is Sita Devi, whether it is Urmila. Right, Urmila also, she decided not to go with her husband because she wanted to serve for the pleasure of Lakshman. She wanted to serve her mother-in-laws, right? Kaushaliya, Kaike and Sumitra. So like that, everybody was doing their duty not for their sense gratification but for, but with the seva bhav. And that's how Lord Ram also ruled, right? It is said that Lord Ram would go and cry, you know, with all of the, with all of the people who are, who are having, you know, if there was a death in the house, you know, of anyone of the citizens, Lord Ram would be there consoling them. You know, not as a king, not as a, not as a supreme lord, but as a person who is empathizing with the family. So in that way, a good relationship, how one can establish and yet follow Dharma in all the situations. That is the lesson that was taught by Lord Ram, Mariyada Purushotham Lord Ram. So we will read more details tomorrow as we, as we progress with the study of Ramayan, right? But as of now, when you are studying about Lord Shri Krishna, Krishna is not bound by any rules and regulations. For Krishna, it is loving reciprocation only, right? So he would never, you know, leave anybody, any of his devotees just because he is promised, right? We see in this, so many examples that we discussed in the past couple of days. Right, Krishna will not say, oh, it is okay, let Bishma become aha, shower arrows on Arjuna. I have, I have, I have taken a pratigya, I will not lift any weapon in the battlefield of Chitra Swam, my word is a word, no. What did Krishna decide? Krishna decided that for the protection of my devotee and to also give protection to Bishma Vitama. He picked up the wheel at the chadded and he ran towards Bishma Vikamaha. And that is such a glorious pastime of how Lord Shri Krishna is not concerned about his own word but he is more concerned about protection of his devotees, he is more concerned about his loving reciprocation with the devotees. So that is the difference between Lord Ram and Krishna in terms of the mood. But at least both of them are the supreme personality of Godhead. And hence, you know, whether it was Ravana who was killed by Lord Ram or whether it is Dantavakra or Kamsa or Shishupal who were killed by Krishna, all of them went to the spiritual world. Why? Because to be killed by Krishna also requires a lot of, a lot of sukriti. Because those may, they may have, they have remembered Krishna all the time. Kamsa was remembering Krishna all the time, even his dreams was thinking, oh, when we come Krishna, come and kill me. But just because he was unfavorable, he was not favorably thinking of Krishna or wanting to serve Krishna, right? He only attained that sauyujamukti. He could not get any one of the rasaas with Lord Shri Krishna like that. Alright, let's move ahead. So Ram and Krishna are the same, just like we describing yesterday, Krishna and Vishnu, right? Vishnu, one of the incarnations of Vishnu is only Ram, right? So Vishnu is Krishna in the office and Krishna is Vishnu at home, right? There is loving reciprocation, there is breaking of promises at home, nobody is going to take you to court because you told this that day, right? But whereas in the office, you promise something, you sign some document, you are bound by that. So that is the mood of Lord Ram, whereas this is the mood of Lord Shri Krishna like that. Alright, let's move ahead. In the beginning of Shrimad Bhagavatam, who is reading now, next, Shridhar Prabhu, go ahead. And then Karpa Goli Mataji, Asha Arya Mataji and then Sindhu Mataji, yes, go ahead.
Hare Krishna, Dhanukranam Mataji. In the beginning of Shrimad Bhagavatam, Shilpa Vyashthav offered his respectful obeisance to the supreme truth Vasudevah Krishna. After that, he taught his son Sukhdeva Goswami to preach Shrimad Bhagavatam. It is in this connection that Sukhdeva Goswami glorify the lord with the word jyoti, with the jyoti. Following the footstep of Shilpa Vasudevah, Sukhdeva Goswami and all the Acharyas in disciplining succession, the whole population of the world to glorify Lord Krishna and for their best interest, they should take to this Krishna consciousness movement. The progress is very easy and helpful, it is simply chant the Mahamandhra. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Radchaitanya has therefore recommended that one, one be call us to that material ups and downs. Material life is temporal and so the ups and downs in of life may come and go. When they come, one should be tolerant as a tree and as a humble and mick as a straw in the street. But certainly he must engage himself in Krishna consciousness by chanting Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. The supreme personality of the Godhead Krishna, the superpower of all living entities out of this godless mercy comes down and manifests his different transcendental pastimes in different incarnations. Hearing the attractive pastime of Lord Krishna, different incarnation is a change of liberation for the conditioned soul. And most fascinating and pleasing activities of Lord Krishna himself are still more attractive because Lord Krishna personally are attractive. Following is the holy footstep of Shilpa Sukhdeva Goswami. We have tried to present this book Krishna from the beginning, read and hear the conditioned soul of this age. By hearing the pastime of Lord Krishna, one is sure and certain to get the salvation and transferred back home, back to Godhead. It is stated by Sukhdeva Goswami that we, we are the transcendental pastime of the lord. We gradually cut the knots of material contamination. Therefore regardless of one who is, if one wants association of Lord Krishna is a transcendental kingdom of God for eternally in blissful existence. One must hear about the pastime of Krishna and chant the Mahamandhra. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. The transcendental past. Hare Krishna, Dhanukranam Mataji.
Hare Krishna, right, so the word jyoti is very significant. In Bhagavatam also there is a beautiful verse. Jyoti janani vasoh devaki janmavado. Yedu vara parisha svamdu dvirasyanna dharmam. Stiracharavriginagrina susmita shri mukenna. Praja pura vannitanaam vardayan kamadevan. Jyoti, jyoti, all glories to everybody who is connected with Lord Shri Krishna. Whether one is connected, right? All of them are called Janani Vas. Janani Vas means the ultimate protector of all of the living entities is that Krishna. So all glories to that Shri Krishna and all of his devotees who is known as Devaki Nandan because of his connection with Devaki. Yashoda Nandan being the son of Yashoda, he is the guide of the Yadu dynasty. And then he is responsible for everything that is auspicious. He removes everything that is inauspicious and he also may be glorious and happy, jyoti. Jyoti means let him live eternally and gloriously and he is called Janani Vas. Because he is the ultimate resort, he is the ultimate shelter of all the living entities, right? So the name Krishna itself means sarvam akashini iti Krishna, right? Everything is attractive about Krishna, whether it is Tebanga form, whether it is, whether it is Leela's with the Gopis or the Gopas or even Sudhama or even the Kubja, right? Whether it is Dwarka Leela or whether it is Mathura Leela or if it is Vrindavan Leela, right? All of the pastimes of the supreme personality of Godhead Lord Shri Krishna are so transcendently sweet, right? So the pastimes of Lord Ram, as we are going to study from tomorrow, those pastimes gave us lessons to be learnt. Every pastime is a lesson to be learnt, how we should conduct our life, right? That is the, that is the motto of Lord Ram's incarnation, right? How to become, you know, a person who performs his duties in a way that is prescribed. That was the goal of Lord Ram's incarnation, to establish Dharma and to, and to extinguish Dharma. Of course, that is also the reason why Krishna appeared. Idha idha hi dharmasya glanir bhavati bharata. Abhiyuttana madharmasya dadatmaam sujamham. Right, paritranaaya sadhana minashaya chadushkritam dharmasamstapanaarthaya. Sambhavami yugeyugey to establish Dharma, that is the goal of all the incarnations of Lord Krishna. But paritranaaya sadhana is more important than vinaashaya chadushkritam, right? Because if Krishna is to kill, he can only send a coronavirus, right? And then so many millions of people whoever have to die have died, they die, they died like that, right? And whoever had to remain alive, they are remaining alive and, and everybody has to go through this process called death where there is a change of the body. Until we attain perfection, until we attain Krishna prema, there is a cycle we have to go through, whether it is the present or in the future, right? We have to go through this cycle until we always remember Krishna and never forget Krishna. And how can you always remember Krishna, never forget Krishna? In this age of Kali, it is mentioned. Iti shorishakam naam naam kali kalmashanashanam. Naato paratro paya sarvavedeshu drishate. All the Vedas, sarvavedeshu, all the Vedas are stating that there is no other way, there is no other way, there is no other way other than always remembering Krishna and never forgetting Krishna. Eenakeena prakarena mana Krishna niveshayat. Always somehow or the other, we have to remember Krishna. And in this age of Kali, the prescribed method of remembrance of Krishna is by the chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamitra. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Why? Because iti shorishakam naam naam kali kalmashanashanam. So we all know the bad qualities of the age of Kali. Mandasu mandamatayo prayen alpayushasabhyaa kalobasvin yugejanaa. Mandasu mandamatayo mandabhagyaupadrata. We are all having mandabhagya, we are all misguided, we are all, we are ready to make quarrels at the, at the smallest instance. We are ready to quarrel with people, we are misguided, we don't understand, we don't have the intelligence. We don't even have the ayu, right? Not even hundred years people live in these days. Why? Because, because you know the planet earth or the Bhumi Mata is so disgusted. That so many famines and flood and there you know, forest fires, they all take place, right? And then recently in Burma, right, Burma Myanmar also, right? This landslide and everything. Why all these are happening? That is because you know the Kali yoga as it progresses, the times are going to be much, much worse. And this is a situation even in this 10,000 years golden period. So you can really imagine how it would be after this, after 10,000 years golden period, right? So the best thing is to chant Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. And always remember Krishna by chanting Hare Krishna Mahamitra and also by hearing these wonderful pastimes of the lord by studying the Krishna book, by studying the Ramayana book, we are going to start from tomorrow, the pastimes of Lord Ram. And then by studying the Bhagavad Gita, by studying the Bhagavatam, by studying the Chaitanya Charitaamritta, like this we can remember Krishna. So whomever we are, we are, we want to know more about those kind of people, books only we read, right? If you want to know more about Lord Ram, then we, that we study Ramayan. If you want to know more about Lord Ram, then we, that we study Ramayan. If you want to know more about Lord Sri Krishna, then we study Srimad Bhagavatam, which has all the wonderful pastimes of the supreme personality of Godhead, right? Otherwise, if you want to know more about how the Lord established, you know, the Vaishnava relationships. Then we, then we study Chaitanya Charitamrata, right? And Chaitanya Charitamrata should be postgraduate study, right? So first we complete Bhagavad Gita, then we move to Bhagavatam from first canto till the tenth canto. With the grace of Shilpa Prabhupada, we are already in the tenth, in the last part of the tenth canto of Srimad Bhagavatam. Because we are studying the summary study, the tenth canto of Srimad Bhagavatam, it is the causeless mercy of Shilpa Prabhupada. That we are studying this section, right? In this also we skipped a few sections. Because it was too, you know, esoteric for us, right? At the sadhana level, this is not something that we can meditate on and it may not be good for our consciousness to progress in Krishna consciousness. So even in the summaries to study, that is given by Shilpa Prabhupada, right? Then, then we can, we can understand if somebody directly jumped into the tenth canto of Srimad Bhagavatam. You know how polluted that, that has, you know, that has a potential of making an impure mind more corrupt. And that is not the purpose of hearing Krishna Katha. We want to, we want to purify our mind, we want to cleanse our mind so that we can reawaken that love for the supreme personality of Godhead. And not the tendency to imitate the Lord, right? So our tendency is to understand that Krishna is a lord, Krishna can do what he desires, but I am the servant of the lord. I need to follow the instructions of the supreme personality of Godhead, Lord Sri Krishna. So that is a mode, then we will be held to a Krishna to understand what is right, what is wrong. He will give us intelligence, he will give us the. He will give us remembrance, forgetfulness and also the knowledge, right? If at all we develop the right spirit like that. Okay, Karpa Goli Mathaji, go ahead. The transcendental pastimes. Yes.
The transcendental pastimes of the supreme personality of Godhead Krishna are so powerful. That simply by hearing, reading and memorizing this book Krishna, one is sure to be transferred to the spiritual world. Which is ordinarily very difficult to achieve. The description of the pastimes of Lord Krishna is so attractive. And that, that it automatically gives us an impetus to study repeatedly. And the more we study the pastimes of the Lord, the more we become attached to him. This is, this very attachment to Krishna makes one eligible to be transferred to this about Gokula Vrindavana. As we have learned from the previous chapter, Goloka Vrindavana, sorry. As we have learned from the previous chapter to cross over the material world. Is to cross over the stringent laws of material nature. The stringent laws of material nature cannot check the progress of one who is attracted to the, attracted by the spiritual nature. This is confirmed in the Bhagavad Gita, the Lord himself. Although the stringent laws of material nature are very difficult to overcome. One who surrenders unto the Lord can very easily cross over Nisans. There is no influence of the material nature in this spiritual world. As we have learned from the second canto of Srimad Bhagavatam, the ruling power of the demigods and the influence of material nature. Are conspicuous by that absence in this spiritual world. Shall I continue, Mathaji?
No, no, one, one paragraph, they have forty two things, each of you can read.
Thank you, thank you, Mathaji.
Thank you, Dhana Pranam. Alright, so what is this verse? Right? This is what is mentioned by Prabhupada here. It is my energy, Krishna is saying. It is my energy, Maya Devi is my energy and it is very, very difficult to cross over the, the, the three modes of material nature. Is able to cross over the three modes of material nature very easily because one has taken shelter of Krishna. Because Maya Devi works under the direction of Krishna and if one is taken in shelter of Krishna, then one is directly under the control of Krishna. Or Yoga Maya, as the case may be. And hence, one is automatically able to control one's senses. To not be afflicted by the three modes of material nature, one is able to be. One can be in this world but need not be of this world. One's thoughts, one's activities, one's desires, everything is already transcendental. Because one wants to. Why wants to surrender everything, thought, word and deed in the service of the Lord? And if such a person is already transcendental to the three modes of material nature, although him be still be situated in this material world, alright. Okay, next, let's go ahead. Who is reading next? Asha Arya Mathaji, can you switch on your camera also? Maybe you've joined us for the first time, let's see who you are, if possible, otherwise you can continue reading, please unmute.
Mathaji, I have like, I have attended your lectures previously. And this is the book which I have missed it. It's not my first time.
No problem, but if you can switch on your camera, it will be nice because I am not able to recollect who you are. If possible, you can, otherwise you continue reading, yeah.
Hare Krishna, Mathaji, I'm just continuing the reading. And very unfortunate to miss this book, Mathaji, Krishna work. I was with you where like Shri La Prabhupada, Leelamrit was reading, when we were reading at that time, I was with you, Mathaji.
People, yeah, pleased to join us for Ramayana. Hare Krishna, yes.
Shri La Shukdev Goswami has therefore advised Maharaj Parikshit in the beginning of the second canto. That every conditioned soul should engage himself in hearing and chanting the transcendental pastimes of the Lord. Shri La Shukdev Goswami also informed Parikshit that previously many other things, kings and emperors went to the jungle. To prosecute severe austerity and penances in order to go back home, back to Godhead. In India, it is still a practice that many advanced transcendentalists give up their family lives and go to Vrindavan to live there alone. And completely engage in hearing and chanting the holy pastimes of the Lord. This system is recommended in Srimad Bhagavatam and the six Goswamis of the Vrindavan followed it. But at the present moment, many karmas and pseudo devotees have overcrowded the holy place of Vrindavan. Just to imitate the process recommended by Shukdev Goswami. It is said that many kings and emperors formally went to the forest for this purpose. But Shri La Bhaktisiddhanta Saraswati Thakur does not, Mathaji, can you scroll up?
Yes, Mathaji, can you read? Okay, anyways, last line. But Shri La Bhaktisiddhanta Saraswati Thakur does not recommend that one take up the solitary life in Vrindavan prematurely. Yeah, so it is said, Prabhupada also very, very strictly, Prabhupada says. That if you go to Vrindavan Dam, you should go in the association of devotees and you should not stay for more than three days. Why? Because going to Vrindavan Dam and talking about, you know, the dirt in Vrindavan or talking about. You know, Vrindavan Vasis or the devotees of the Lord, you know, gossiping is going to create more harm than. The, the very purpose of, you know, the going to Vrindavan is to purify ourselves, right? But one is, one is doing gossiping, one is not hearing Krishna Katha, one is doing anything. Which is not congenial for Krishna consciousness, then the damage that it can cause is much, much higher. Than the benefit that it can cause by, by even stepping into Vrindavan Dam. Because Vrindavan is a very dangerous place, as much as it is highly potent. It is very, very dangerous that a person who having material consciousness can fall down, can lose the taste. For even the basic practices that one may be doing, that is why one should be very careful in Vrindavan Dam, right? In Mayapur and Jagannathpuridham, especially Mayapur Dam. It is said that, you know, if one can, one is sleeping also in the dam, it is like offering obeisances. And in Jagannathpuridham, for all food lovers, if you are having Jagannath prasadam, then, then it is like. Then it is like progressing in Krishna consciousness, that's Jagannathpuridham. But in Vrindavan Dam, if you are, if you are engaged in any kind of activity that is, you know, that is maybe sleeping in ignorance. Or overeating or you know, doing things for a sense gratification, then it's going to be, that is very detrimental to our progress in Krishna consciousness. Right? That's why even Radha Krishna deity worship also is considered to be of the highest standard, right? That is why we go for Gornita deity, go for Jagannath Baldiv Subhutramaya deities. But to have Krishna, Radha Krishna deities at home means to follow very, very high levels of purity. Very, very high levels of adherence to the, you know, the Panchratri Kavidi like that, right? So one has to be very, very careful in Vrindavan Dam because it's such a pure, it's such a pure dam. But the person whose eyes are not yet tinted with the love for the supreme personality of Godhead, he does not see the real dam. And one tends to commit offenses in the dam. That is why Prabhupada said three days only and that also only in the association of devotees one should go. And then one has to come back to one's karma bhumi like that Prabhupada says. Alright, that is where one comes back, draws the energy or the strength for preaching Krishna consciousness from the dam. And then go back to one's karma bhumi and preach the message of Krishna consciousness, just like Prabhupada did. Right? Prabhupada left Vrindavan and took Vrindavan consciousness to the western world. Alright, let's move ahead. One who prematurely goes to Vrindavan, okay, Sindhu Mathaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna, Mathaji, Pranam. Hari Bhagwala Prabhupada Ki Jaye. One who prematurely goes to Vrindavana to live in perseverance of the instructions of Shilpa Goswami. Again falls victim to Maya even while residing in Vrindavana. To check such unauthorized residence in Vrindavana, Shri La Bhaktisiddhanta Saraswati Thakura has sung a nice song in this connection. The purpose of which is as follows, my dear mind, why are you so proud of being a Vaishnava? Your solidly chanting of the holy name of the Lord is based on a desire for cheap popularity and therefore your chanting is only a pretension. Such an ambition for a cheap reputation may be compared to the stool of a hog because such popularity is another extension of the influence of Maya. One may go to, one may go to Vrindavan for cheap popularity and instead of being absorbed in Krishna consciousness. One may always think of money and women which are simply temporary sources of happiness. It is better that one engage whatever money and women he may have in his position in the service of the Lord. Because sense enjoyment is not for the conditioned soul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vijayate, right? There is this Falgu Vairagya and there is Yukta Vairagya. Falgu Vairagya means to renounce everything but it is continuously going in our head, right? What is that? That means the sense objects, we have externally given up the sense objects. But the desire to enjoy the sense objects is there in our mind, it is going on continuously. When that happens, what is it? Then, you know, for the external world, we are, we are so called, you know, Vairagi. We have given up, this, given up that, etcetera, but inside we are already enjoying. Why? Because our heart is lamenting, right? Our heart is grieving or, you know, for something lost or for something that we have given up. Or our heart is lamenting for something that we have not got, right? Vishanbumsang is constantly nagging at us, right? Because of which we cannot do even devotional services properly because the mind is continuously ranting about something. And we don't have peace of mind and then where can we get the joy by chanting Hare Krishna, right? We have to first address the mind in a proper way and that is Yukta Vairagya. How do we address the mind properly? Yes, I will take care of you, just like Haridha Stakur took care of the prostitute, right? He said, okay, I will enjoy with you, I will, I will fulfill your desire, but then I have to complete my quota of chanting Hare Krishna Mahamandhra. So like that we have to tame our mind that yes, yes, I will take care of you, we will watch that, we will do this, we will do that. But first let me complete the devotional service and as we perform devotional service, our desire to do that particular activity will go away. That's why it is said that if you want to perform a devotional service, activity, immediately we should do it. But if you want to indulge in, say, watching a movie or watching a cricket match, watching a TV serial, you know what you should do? Okay, let me complete all these things and then if I have time, I will watch it, right? That's why the mind also thinks, okay, let me fat of fat finish all those things and if there is time, let us watch. But our activities are so filled throughout the day that we don't have time for all these activities. But, but, but we trick the mind, we will do it after this, after this, after this, but there is no completion, there are so many activities given by Prabhupada. Right from Mangala Arati to China Arati, where is the time for all these other activities, right? So but how do we trick the mind? Okay, I will do this, after this, I will do this, I will do, later on if I have time, I will do it, right? And, and sometimes you need to given also, right? We have done, that is the reason Krishna conscious yatras. Going on Krishna, the association of devotees, going on picnic, etcetera, helps. In the association of devotees, you are able to stick to your purpose of no nonsensical activities. And engaging only in the service of the supreme personality of Godhead and that can be done in a very enjoyable way. It is not that entire life has to be in austerity, like wearing a Rajbirahar for his lecture. He was saying, you know, have three lists, lists of things you want to do, what you have to do and what you need to do, right? To keep a, keep the body in proper shape, we need to do pranayama, yoga asana, suri namaskar, etcetera. These things we need to do to keep our health in good shape so that we can practice devotional service. And certain things we have to do, right? We don't have taste in chanting but we have to do, right? And then maybe things we like to do, maybe we like to sing bajans for the Lord or we like to do Archivigraha Seva, we like to do Arati. We like to participate in Hari Nam Sang Kirten, so we do those activities which we like to do and we have to do. And then we need to do to keep our body in good health, we need to do those things. So we need to keep a proper balance amongst all the three of them so that we don't feel unduly pressurized that I am continuously doing what I don't like, right? There are so many options given, right? You distribute books, you read Shilpa Prabhupada's books, you know, do Kirten, everything that you like to do, you do. And also the basic minimal things that we do for the pleasure of the Lord, that is chanting Hare Krishna Mahamandhra, waking up in the morning during Brahman Murtha time. Those things also we do because when you please the Lord, that is when we get actual pleasure. But just to satisfy the mind, you know, sing bajans and other things also, but the consciousness is that, yeah, I am singing for the pleasure of the Lord. Although it gives me pleasure also, I am singing for the pleasure of the Lord, I am dancing for the pleasure of the Lord. I am cooking and offering boga for the pleasure of the Lord, right? And it is, it is also enjoyable for me because I also like the taste of the prasadam, right? That only comes, but the further higher we go in devotional service, we want to simply do it with the pleasure of the Lord. And we simply want to honor prasadam because it is the mercy of the Lord and not for the material taste of the prasadam. And that Vairagya or that detachment has to happen by attachment to Krishna. That cannot be artificially done but that. Likely will be developed when we increase our attachment to Krishna by doing, by dovetailing all our activities. For the pleasure of the supreme personality of Godhead, Lord Sri Krishna. Now we go to the last paragraph, who's reading this? Yes, Devan Mathaji, last paragraph, go ahead.
Yeah, Hare Krishna, Mathaji, Dhana Pranam. The master of the senses is Rishi Keisha, Lord Krishna, therefore the senses should always be engaged in his service. As for material reputation, there were many demons like Ravana who wanted to go against the laws of material nature. But they are, but they all failed. One should therefore not take to the demonic activity of claiming to be a Vaishnava just for false prestige without performing service to the Lord. But when one engages oneself in the devotional service of the Lord, automatically the Vaishnava reputation comes to him. There is no need to be envious of the devotees who are engaged in preaching the glories of the Lord. We have practical experience of being advised by the so-called Baba Jis in Vrindavana that there is no need to preach and that is. That it is better to live in Vrindavana in a solitary place and chant the holy name. Such Baba Jis do not know that if one is engaged in preaching or in glorifying the supreme personality of Godhead, the good reputation of a preacher automatically follows one. One should not therefore prematurely give up the honest life of a householder to lead a life of devotion in Vrindavana. Shri La Shukdeva Goswami's recommendation to leave home and go to the forest in search of Krishna is not for immature persons. Maharaja Parikshit was mature, even in his household life or from the very beginning in his life, he worship Lord Krishna's murthy. In this, in his childhood, he worshiped the deity of Lord Krishna and later, although he was a householder, he was always undetached. And therefore, when he got the notice of his death, he immediately gave up all the connection with household life. And sat down on the bank of the gauges to hear Srimad Bhagavatam in the association of devotees. Thus ends the Bhakti Vedanta purpose of the ninetieth chapter of Krishna, summary description of Lord Krishna's pastime. Hare Krishna, Mathaji, thank you, Dhana Pranam.
Congratulations to all of you for having completed the Krishna book by the grace of Avez Charanaranda Bhakti Vedanta Swamishla Prabhupada. So this is, I think, the seventeenth to the eighteenth book that is completed of Prabhupada. Now we will go to a book that is written by disciple of Shilpa Prabhupada. Krishna Dharma Prabhu has written this book Ramayana, right? It's there on the Veda base and as Grace Radhisam Prabhu said, you should discuss the pastimes as well as some learnings from the Ramayana book. By Krishna Dharma Das Prabhu, so that's what we will do, starting tomorrow. Tomorrow we will start the most auspicious book of Ramayana. As you know, we are in the consciousness of Ramanomi still, right? We're preparing for the most auspicious occasion of Ramanomi and Ramanomi just happened this week. So we will start with Ramayan, praying to Lord Ram, Sita Ram Lakshman Bajaj, Satrubuna Hanumanji. That may our consciousness be dovetailed towards Seva Vriti, right? From Boga Vriti, that's what each of the characters of Ramayan are depicting. How everyone tries to serve, everyone is keeping somebody else ahead of them and want to satisfy them. And they don't, and they are not going in for personal sense gratification. So that is a very important quality that a devotee needs to develop. And maybe by the, we can pray that by the study of Ramayan, maybe also develop those wonderful qualities. We want to develop all the good qualities of the demigods and that is automatically acquired. When we hear the pastimes of the Lord, when we read the pastimes of the Lord, when we derive lessons from the, from the lives of those pure devotees of the Lord. Who sacrifice everything for the pleasure of the Lord, for the pleasure of his devotees. So in this way, we complete the study of the Krishna book. It's very wonderful that by the grace of Guru and Gorangavi could completed today is the, is the date of birth of his only Jaipata Kasswamishla Purumaraj. He was born on April ninth nineteen forty nine in Milwaukee. He was born on April ninth nineteen forty-nine in Milwaukee. Uh so uh on the auspicious day of his uh, of Jaipataka Swamishla Gurumaraja's um uh appearance day, as per the English calendar, we have completed. Uh okay, what is the timeline? Let's see, what is the time? Okay, twelve fifteen, okay, we close today and tomorrow we will start. Uh we've got, we've given a kind of introduction to Ramayan. So we will start with Krishna Dharma Das Prabhu's book tomorrow. Uh we will have the session at eleven fifteen AM at this time. Uh and and we will try to complete our next book which is Ramayan for the pleasure of Lord Ram, for the pleasure of Srila Prabhupada, for the pleasure of all of our gurus. Um Granthran Shrimad Bhagavatam Ki Jay, Krishna Book Ki Jay. Jagat Guru Srila Prabhupada, Shri Gurudeva Ki Jay. Anantapoti Vaishnava Vrindha Ki Jay. Nidai Gora, Premaanande, Hari Hari Bol. Oh, today is also Shridhar Prabhu's birthday. Hare Krishna, so we wish Shridhar Prabhu a very, very happy Krishna conscious birthday. And also let's all chant one time the Panchitathu Mantra and three times Hare Krishna Mahamantra. But please this Lord Sri Krishna may Prabhu keep the very best of health and always engage in the service of Shri Shiguru and Shri Goranga. Jay, Shri Krishna, Jaitanya, Brahmanityananda. Shri Advaidhagaradhar, Shri Vasadigora Bhaktavrinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. Krishna Krishna, Hare Krishna. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Krishna. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Krishna. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Krishna. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Krishna. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Krishna. So we do it in the Brahmanmurtar program as part of the program itself. The last part of the program, we chant for all the devotees who have their wedding anniversaries, birthdays, etcetera. So if possible, we request devotees to join in for a Brahmanmurtar chanting session. That's happening now from four thirty AM to seven fifteen AM, right? It's a, that's a three hour window, you can join in between for as many rounds as is convenient for you in the morning. And maybe you can stay till the last part of the session which happens around seven fifteen to seven thirty AM, wherein we chant uh for those devotees who are having their birthdays and wedding anniversaries. After all, it's only by the blessings of the devotees that we are even able to practice Krishna consciousness. So thank you devotees for your prayers. Shridhar Prabhu.
Hare Krishna, Mathaji.
Yes.
Hare Krishna, Mathaji. Mathaji, I was till now, you know, I was missing your all lectures and your classes, Mathaji. And I'm very good, you know, fortunate also again to join you. Like because my clock collapsing with your time, so that's I was unable to join. And now the timings have shifted, I am really fortunate to join you again, Mathaji. Hare Krishna, Danat Pranam, Mathaji, thank you so much.
Krishna, thank you very much. You can also check it out on the YouTube channel in case you are missing any particular Zoom session.
Yeah, I'll be watching your, watching your, all the lectures, all the lectures I'll be watching. Hare Krishna.
Srila Prabhupada Ki Jai, Shri Gurudeva Ki, Anantapoti, Vrindha Ki Jai. Nidai, Hari Hari Bol. Thank you very much, we meet you all tomorrow morning, four thirty AM for our chanting session. Anytime between four thirty and seven fifteen AM, that's a long window. So request devotees to join in um and also join us at eleven fifteen AM as we continue uh with the study of Ramayana uh for the pleasure of Srila Prabhupada, for the pleasure of all of our gurus. Hare Krishna. Now we'll do Hari Nam Sangkirtan and it's mandatory that during Hari Nam Sangkirtan, we want to see all the devotees darshan, right? So please do switch on your cameras and where is this, Mathaji? Asha Arya, Mathaji, I'd really like to see you because I'm not able to put a face to your name. Now that whatever you've told, really want to see you. So probably during kirtan time, you can give your darshan. Namah Om Shno Padaya, Te Aya, Tu Tade, Imate, Ivedanta. Swami Nittinami Ne, Namaste Sarasvati Devi, Dora Vani Pachadi Ne. Nirviseshasunavadi, Askatya Deshadaadi Ne. Raja Sri Krishna, Prayitanya, Rabonitjananda. Tri Advaidhagaradhar Shiva Sadhi, Aura Bhaktavrinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Ore Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare. Hare Jaya, Sauranitaya Jaya, Jaya Jagannath Jaya, Jaya Baludhe Jaya, Jaisubhadra. Jai Jaisubhadra, Jai Balagupar, Te Rupni Nivithal. Jai Pralad Narshinga, Jaya Rashminarshinga, Jai Pralad Narshinga, Te Rupni Nivithal Jaya. Radha Krishna Jaya Radha Madha, Jaya Radha Madha. Jai Radha Shama Sundar Jaya Radhe Radhe, Jai Radha, Raas Bihari, Radha Vrindavan Sandra. Radha Raas Bihari, Sri Radhe Jaya, Jatgo Swami Jaya, Guru Paramputa Jaya, Kuhupada. Jaya Guru Deva Nithai, Dora Hari Bol, Hari Bol, Hari Bol, Hari Bol. Kali yoga vajitavam Hari Nam Sangkirtan Mahayadne Ki Jai Ho Jagat Guru Shridha Prabhupada. Shri Gurudeva Ki Jai, Nantapoti Vaishnava Vrindha Ki Jai. Nidai Gora, Premaanande, Hari Hari Bol. Alright, thank you, Shoba Mathaji, our Karpa Kavali Mathaji, Sindhu Mathaji, Shridhar Prabhu, Archana Sri Radha Mathaji, Rajeshwari Rajiv Mathaji, Archana Mathaji, Rajneesh Prabhu, Harjit Mathaji and all the devotees for joining in. Anchaakalpatarupyascha, Krupaasindu Behavacha. Patitana Bhavanibyo, Vaishnavebyo, Nobolamrahak. Anantapoti Vaishnava Vrindha Ki Jai, Jagat Guru, Shridha Prabhupada Ki Jai, Shri Gurudeva Ki Jai. Nidai Gora, Premaanande, Hari Hari Bol. Thank you devotees, meet you all tomorrow morning, five o'clock and then at eleven fifteen AM.